Post ordinance. Item 6A, consideration in action on a proposed ordinance to authorize acceptance from the State of Connecticut Department of Energy and Environmental Protection of a permanent drainage easement and rights to drain for drainage improvements at 530 Westcott Road. At this time, if anyone would like to speak to this item, please come up to the podium and state your name and address. Last call for public comments on this item. Seeing none, we'll move on in the agenda. Next item for public hearing is item 6B. Item 6B is consideration in action on a resolution to authorize the town manager to expend up to $360,000 of American Rescue Act funding for the stormwater box culvert replacement project. If anyone would like to speak to this, please step up to the podium and state your name Last call for public comment on this item. Seeing none, we'll move on in the agenda. And this will close the public hearing. It is currently 7:04 PM. So item 3A is interview of boards and commission applicants. Melissa Phillips is seeking reappointment as a regular member of the Board of REC. Her term will run from January 1st, 2023 to December 31st, 2024. Ms. Phillips has attended one out of two meetings in 2024 and four out of five meetings in 2023. Welcome?
Yep.
Yes. Can you just tell us about your time on the Board of REC and why you're seeking reappointment?
There. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
So, Jason, what was the question about my time on the board?
Just your time on the Board of REC and why you originally signed up and why you're seeking reappointment.
Okay, sure. So I've been on the Board of Recreation for 28 years. So obviously, I'm pretty passionate about recreation in the town of Killinglye. And really, I feel that recreation is so valuable to a community. First of all, it offers, you know, opportunities for our citizens to learn, to have fun, to bring families together. There's so many things that we do that really make our community special. And I think it's an important thing when people are looking to see where they're going to settle and, you know, what a community can offer to them when they see all the... We offer some great programs. And it's... And parks. I mean, can't forget about our beautiful parks, too. You know, several of us were down at Owen Bell on Saturday for the Joyce Ritchie dedication. And it's just so... It makes me feel so good every time I'm there and I see how many people are enjoying that beautiful flagship park of ours. So, yeah, I mean, those are the main reasons that I stay involved.
Okay. I will open up for her comments.
Did you say 28 years?
28 years.
Wow. Thank you for the service.
I know. Thank you. I couldn't believe it myself.
That's wonderful. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
The... I've worked for many, many, many of those 28 years with Melissa. And it's... It really is. It's from birth, birth to silver sneakers all the way. And, you know, the programming is not just Killinglye residents. We're bringing people from outside the area to enjoy our parks, to enjoy our programs.
And it really does draw people in. You know, I think about the drumming circle that'll be going on throughout the summer into the fall. You know, that's an attraction that brings not only...
I gotta get to one of those.
Yeah.
It's... I mean, that's Rhode Island, Mass. It brings everybody in.
Right.
And the staff at REC, they're just as passionate, I think, about...
I agree. And the theater, our theater program's doing amazing. There is a show coming up this weekend and the following weekend, just so everybody knows, Steel Magnolia. And, you know, they're, they're just doing great things with the theater program. And we're... And I also think about the fact that we have so many things that families can participate in and have fun as a family without having to leave town, without having to go to the expense of, you know, traveling somewhere, the cost to get in. You know, if you look at our lineup of activities this summer, there's a lot going on here in Killinglye, which I feel good about, and I'm sure you all do, too.
On behalf of the council and the town, I want to thank you for all your years of service. It is great when members of the community step forward and volunteer and give their own time for the betterment of the community, and I want to thank you for that.
You're welcome.
I just wanted to say, it's always a packed schedule every time I go in there. And I don't go in there enough, but I am doing the next yoga class. I'm happy about that. But it's just, there's always a warm smile. There's always someone to help you if you don't know what you're doing. You know, you guys jumped right in on our shoe drive, and that was amazing.
Right.
I can't say enough about the staff, not just the REC, but library and the highway department. You guys do an amazing job.
Yeah, I agree.
And we're so thankful to have you all.
You know, and that's such an important piece of it, you know, the level of service that some... I don't care where you are, but the level of service you get when you walk into a, into a building, that's great. Great to hear.
You always feel welcome.
I agree.
Any other comments? Seeing none, I want to thank you, and we will be voting on your reappointment next Tuesday.
Okay. All right. Thank you, everyone. Have a good night.
You, too. Next item up on the agenda is item 4A. Unfinished business for town meeting action, which will be moved. We'll entertain a motion to...
You don't need to move it. You can... The town council has to take an action on this before it can go to special town meeting. Special town meeting does happen at 8 o'clock, so you just have to take that action before 8 o'clock. So you could take this item now and then just continue on with your agenda until you get close to 8 o'clock where you would want to recess your regular meeting to perform special town meeting.
So at this time, we'll move on to item 4A, unfinished business for town meeting action, consideration in action on ordinance authorizing a transfer of up to $161,463 to the established unexpected education funds account. So I will entertain a motion to move this to town meeting at 8 o'clock. No, I didn't have first. Motion made by Ms. Murphy, second by Ms. George. Any discussion?
I do want to just highlight that the Board of Education did submit a secondary request recently, which is attached to your agenda item, where they requested the town council reconsider their original request. As you recall, the original request was for an amount up to the $411,463 of the surplus. And so based on their newest changes, modifications to the budget, they are requesting the council reconsider that number. The council can make action and change that before sending it to town meeting floor. So I just wanted to highlight that newest communication.
Thank you.
Well, if we can modify that before the annual, before the public hearing, then I'd like to amend the motion to add, to increase it to the original amount, to bring it to the $2 million cap of $411,463.
I'll second.
Okay. We got a motion and a second. Discussion on the amendment. Seeing none, we will take a vote on the amendment. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
No?
No.
We're gonna have to do a roll call because that was really close.
I just did.
Tony Gambitista?
Yes.
And Andrew Wyhead?
No.
Michelle Murphy?
No.
Kevin Kurtula?
Yes.
Tammy Wakefield?
No.
Patty George?
Yes.
Ula Teak Barclay?
No.
Jason Anderson?
No. Motion fails. So we're back to the original motion on authorizing a transfer of up to $161,463 to the established unexpected education funds account. And the motion is to send it to special town meeting at 8 o'clock.
I'll make that motion.
We already have a motion and a second. I am looking for any further discussion. Seeing no further discussion, we are voting on the original motion to send it to town meeting for a transfer of up to $161,463 to the unexpected, unexpected spent education funds account. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Abstentions? Motion carries. We'll now move on in the agenda. Next item up is item 5, citizen statements and petitions. Did we have any comments submitted for the special town council meeting?
I had none submitted.
Thank you. If anyone would like to make public comment, it just has to be relevant to the items on this evening's agenda, which are items 4A, 6A, and 6B, please step up to the podium and state your name and address. Last call for public comments. Seeing no public comment, we'll move on in the agenda. Next item up is 6A, consideration in action on a proposed ordinance to authorize acceptance from the State of Connecticut Department of Energy and Environmental Protection of a permanent drainage easement and rights to drain for drainage improvements at 530 Westcott Road. Can I get a motion to adopt this?
Second.
Motion's been made by Ms. Barclay, second by Ms. Wakefield. Ms. Clorio, could you go over this, please?
Yes. So this is actually a small... The... Well, the address is Westcott Road. It's a small piece of land that is on the corner of Cranberry Bog. We've recently redone the drainage and the pavement up through there, and this would just formalize an existing drainage that has always been there. We would formalize this with a, with a formalized easement. I gave you two maps. One is the full project map, which is really hard to identify where that little square is. And so then the secondary map is just a blow up of that one section. It's 600 square feet. The value of that easement is $36 when we calculate it. So because the value of that proposed easement that the town would be acquiring is less than 5,000, the town council takes action on this item. And so this was introduced to the town council at your regular meeting on April 9th, scheduled for the public hearing for tonight, and then we would be looking for action. There is no cost to the town with... We're not paying for that 600 square feet. We are just executing the easement with Connecticut deep.
Just for clarification purposes, in the proposed ordinance, it talks about a $1.
Yeah. It's a $1.
I do know that is required by state law.
Correct.
For any easement or property transfer, there has to be a minimum of a $1 transfer.
Yes. So it's a dollar. My apologies.
Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. We'll now move on in the agenda. Next item up is item 6B, consideration in action on a resolution to authorize the town manager to expend up to $360,000 of American Rescue Act funding for the stormwater box culvert replacement project. Can I get a motion to adopt this?
Second.
Motion's been made by Ms. Barclay, second by Mr. Kurtula. Ms. Clorio, could you go over this, please?
Yes. So this, there is a... The town council invested over the last two years funding in doing drainage system study that we started basically at the river right over here and on, right off of Main Street, and we're mapping it all the way up to Reynolds Street. In that study, we determined really what were considered critical areas that needed repair and renovation. We fixed a couple of those. If you recall, we fixed the section right at the, one of the rear entrance of the Danielson Firehouse. We had some undermining over there that was deemed to be critical of nature. We were concerned about the heavy equipment going over that section. So that was repaired. This is the next high critical section. The, if you recall from the presentation of that, of that report, the top of the section of the box culvert, so this is in the parking lot of Furnace Street through, over where we're basically calling the brickyard. It has a, a concrete top that is spalling. It has a lot of vertical spalling through it. And then it has stacked stone sides. The, the top, the top of that box culvert, there's concern around the spalling and whether or not it can hold weight loads. It is relatively shallow to the parking lot. There is not a lot of depth between the top of that and the actual parking lot itself. So since we are moving forward with the brickyard project, we would like to be able to do a project completely from the bottom all the way up so we're not redigging up or, you know, having to change or modify something that we've just installed. So those, you know, that, that drainage study was very timely in being able to identify this so we could address this. We've done, the recommendation is to just do a full replacement. We had done the evaluation of just removing the cap and replacing the cap. The cost is projected to be just a little bit less than just doing a full replacement and putting in a full, brand-new concrete box culvert. And I would say that with the fieldstone foundation sides, the stacked stone sides, the minute we start pulling that cap off, you don't really know where those are gonna land, right? Like, they could collapse in, they could lose all integrity, they could stay where they are, right? It is very unknown. So the recommendation is really to just completely remove the existing structure, put in a brand-new concrete box culvert. And so, and then do all the repaving through there. And that would really set us up for a really, you know, solid foundation for building that brickyard. And so we're looking at a cost of $360,000. The request is to utilize that out of the remaining American Rescue Plan Act funding. The town still has an, has an available balance of 1.6 million. So they're sufficient funds to be able to do this allocation. I will be looking to come before the town council, likely in July or August, to be able to consider the final appropriation of the, of the remaining dollars because we'll be wrapping out those initial appropriations, those initial projects that were approved by the council to do a final authorization. And the council had expressed previously to do that, to do the final funding to go towards reducing any costs associated with the Westfield Avenue project, reducing the debt load on that. So we would look to, you know, do that final authorization to be able to finish or complete the allocation of those funds.
So just for clarification, the 1.6 million, that is before?
That's before this.
The $360,000.
Correct. That's before this.
Okay. All right. I just wanted to clarify because the, the way the resolution's written, it's, can get a little confusing in the bottom.
Oh, I apologize.
At the end of it, it says this leaves a funding balance.
My apologies.
Okay. So we would have, with this expenditure, we'd have a funding balance left in there of 1.3?
Yeah, a little over 1.3.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Any discussion, questions, comments from council?
So is 1.3 already allocated?
No, that is not allocated, and that would be coming before you in July or August. It needs to be allocated by December 31st.
Anything plans with a wastewater plant, or that's too big?
We could have that conversation, you know, as to whether or not this would assist in maybe going towards some design, but we'd have to look to see timing as to whether or not it could be expended in the amount of time necessary to, you know, the 1, 1.3 million isn't enough to do design for that, right? So we would have to look at where that might be. But we can have that conversation.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. We'll now move on in the agenda. We have nothing for old business, so new business, item 8A, is meeting with the Permanent Building Commission and Staff Liaison, Mary Braun. And we have roughly 40 minutes almost before our town meeting, so...
There you go.
I'm Tom Weaver. I'm chairman of the Building Commission. This is Kyle Zador. He's vice chair.
Is your mic on? Green light?
Oh. I'm Tom Weaver, chairman of the Building Commission. This is Kyle Zador. He's vice chair. And Mary is, runs the program. We're here to, I guess, answer questions.
Okay. Can you fill us in on how the projects are going?
Good.
Well, I'll just give you, as of our last meeting, the Memorial School is about 85% With summer coming, it'll accelerate with contractors having much more access to the building. As far as budget-wise, again, as of last week, we have about 54% in our owner's contingency and the construction manager's contingency is around 60%. So combined, that's just under one and a half million dollars with, again, 15% left of the project. Now, we're not done, and this could still happen, but we're to the point that we have added some things back in. We added some cabinetry, some acoustical ceiling tiles and the ceiling of the gymnasium. We're looking at repairing a retaining wall. So, you know, I think that we're in a much more comfortable position than we were at the start of this project.
That's good to hear.
And the, the new boiler that was in contention over the winter about heating, you know, it's gonna be in, I think, this week, this month, finally. Through no fault of ours, they went even to different venues and still could not get that type of boiler. And we had to do what we could do. Temporary heat, whatever we had to do.
That seems to be a Killinglye specialty.
HVAC seems to be a big challenge regardless. WPCA with their HVAC system, it took a long time to get the material in, to get the actual units in. So that still seems, that area still seems to have a really long lead time, as well as electrical components. Switches and stuff like that seem to take, they still seem to have a pretty long lead time in trying to get those in. So, and then we're springing into Westfield Avenue's project.
That, yeah, we're ready for the beginning of that, and I'm sure you heard that the bids came back much lower than expected. That was nice, and that allows us to look at some other things. And we are going ahead with having a new heating system designed and priced. That was something that I had actually asked for just some acknowledgement from the council that you folks were on board because it's an expansion that was not included in the original project. My understanding is, you know, you're in favor of it, and it is the time to do it. While we're redoing the rest of the building, this is a way to have it integrate. My understanding is those are the original boilers. I think they're new burners, but original boilers. So we have the opportunity to go to new gas condensing, get rid of the old integrated steam system with valves and traps that are 50 years old. So if it's, if it's affordable, it's the time to do it.
And one of my, what I would like to see us do if there are funds left over is the, overall, the whole job, air conditioning is only the first floor downstairs. The second floor in the summer, I know I've worked for the school system as a private contractor for years, and, and the second floor in the summer is brutal. If we could get air conditioning up there, then the whole building would be AC, if we can afford it.
Yeah, that wasn't part of the original project because the second floor is utilized by a tenant, and there was concerns as to whether or not the expansion of project expenditures in leased space would jeopardize the tax-exempt status of our borrowing, right? So that was kind of, you know, one of the challenges. So we did not include that in order to be able to, but our pricing has been coming in very favorably. And so, you know, that might, and even, you know, that may be something the council decides to say, the ARP funds that are remaining, maybe that goes towards that second floor type work. But, you know, there's some things to be done, but that was one of the concerns that are, the information we were receiving from our bond counsel at the time because they are an outside party that leases it.
Now, I have a question. Wasn't that long ago that it seemed like building materials were awfully expensive?
Oh, yeah.
So is there a reason, is there, just because the economy's kicking back in that it's more reasonable?
My only guess is that they estimated high anticipating that, in that they may have overcompensated in order to play it safe.
We also saw similar, I think we're also gaining efficiencies with having the KMS project at the same time as the Westfield project because we're seeing a lot of the same contractors. And so they're basically being able to leave one site and go to the next site. So there's less in that. Obviously, materials are materials, right? And I think that you're right, they did, they were a lot, very conservative on those material pricings, and we have seen some reduction in that. But we are still, I think we're gaining some of that efficiency, or we're seeing some of that efficiency in doing both projects at the same time. That's the feedback that I got from Antonazi and from Downs is that they had, a lot of the vendors that were at KMS very interested in the Westfield one because they were able to kind of keep their forces in place.
At the beginning, we had to order the steel that we were forming the building up with ahead of time. It was either gonna be astronomical for a price or not available. So we ordered it ahead of time, and it worked out.
So this summer, that one had, we're kind of in full swing now on the Westfield project, especially starting the summer. There, you know, the main roof is gonna get done, the windows, the south-facing brick veneer. So there's a lot of the exterior work that you're gonna see from phase one that we bid out. We, you know, some of it had gotten completed last summer, but it's really the big push on this one. They've already, have they started on the interior on that, those first two rooms? I think they were closing...
I think they were closing that off by the band, the former bandrooms and the music room.
And that abatement activities have started in those areas.
Correct.
When does he anticipate the completion of Westfield Avenue?
The next summer.
Yeah. Yeah, we're about a little over a year construction cycle on that one.
I know Parks and Rec, they're, they're just hoping to build the heaters and everything at Broad Street make it.
One more year.
One more winter.
We can do it.
What would you anticipate with all the improvements? How much, what do we get? How much viability? How long will that building be in use for us? Just a rough estimate, what does it give us?
Well, it's not, this job isn't as, as new. It's repair. The KMS was built as new.
Yep.
But this job, taxpayers, Killenley's paying for it, and we have to stay within the budget and.
Well, the roof and the windows and the exterior brickwork has been, some of it will be new, and a lot of it will be shored up.
Right.
I think is the only word, so.
And if you're able to do the heating system, that's another big component.
So I would say the exterior would be good for 20 years anyway.
I don't know if any of you had the opportunity to go look at the back wall, especially towards the football field. That whole thing was pulling off, so much so that it took the windows with it. They were that far away from the building in some places. It just spalled right out. That's gonna be addressed. And I was amazed, because I had only heard, back when they first started talking about building the new high school up on the hill, how bad it was, and it has gotten worse.
But, you know, as you indicated, there's areas of that building that we're not, that are not going under construction, like the locker room space areas for the gymnasium, those are not part of, those aren't having any, any work done to it, largely the second floor. There's a little bit of minor work that's being done in replicating two of the rooms that are downstairs up to the second floor in order to be able to, you know, give that classroom space option for Eastcon to continue those programs. So they're not gonna be using the community center hallway space.
The gym.
And that, yeah, the gym, there's, you know, only minor work that's being really done in the gym. There's not really a whole lot of major work happening in the gym. So it's really a selective renovation. I would say that, you know, the building is very sound, right? So, you know, I think the building is gonna be, you know, functional for the town well beyond 20, 30, 40 years. Is there gonna be more investment to happen to the, to the building? Absolutely, as with any building. And as you change uses in that building, you're gonna wanna make those investments. But I would say the main systems of this building are being addressed by this project. And hopefully, if we can get the heating system in there, this would be the ideal time to get that done.
All right. Thank you. Any questions, comments from council? Do you have anything further for us?
Things are going well. If we get KMS done under budget, it'll be fantastic.
I know when that started, that was not looking like that was gonna.
Oof. It was scary.
It was pretty scary. And we were cutting out some of the, the major things we were supposed to do.
We let the contractors know that we're not gonna put up with any shenanigans. And they've been pretty good at it, lately.
I remember walking with the project a couple months back, and it was, it was pretty impressive. They're, they're pretty, it's amazing how, it's, it's new, but it's, it's not, so it's, I'm kind of excited for the children in Killenley. That building's gonna be a really nice new addition.
I have been on this board for a very long time, and I've always, the one school that had the lease done was KMS. It's always been that way.
I remember when Dr. Keefe was there, we were supposed to take care of the windows then.
Twice we've gone through and gotten proposals in the 80s, and, and the council didn't have the money to do it. Back then, it was like $3 million, and they couldn't come up with the money. Now it's $37 million.
Yeah.
But the asbestos is gone. All that was, the tile and the mastic behind all the blackboards is asbestos. It was just a, put carpet over it, cover it, do this, do that. It's always been that way. It is gone. Everything is out of there.
Even in the closets.
Yep.
They put that stuff everywheres.
I will ask opinion of council members, just, not, not for actionable item, but just, opinion is where you feel as far as if there is enough additional money in the Westfield project, as far as doing the boiler system, the upgrade on that. Would you, is that something you would be in favor of, want more information on?
Well, that was the conversation we had a couple of, like, two meetings ago. You guys had discussed it, and again, we would bring back, you know, what those dollar values are. They had moved forward with doing the design, but it seemed everybody at that meeting was pretty comfortable with at least moving forward with the design and hopefully getting pricing on that to even see if there's enough money in the project. We're still, you know, trying to determine that.
What's the, what's the age?
They're 40 years old, at least.
So is the difference?
Is your mic on?
May I ask, what's the difference from what's there currently to what the efficiency would be of new?
Dramatic.
He's the man talking now.
And how quickly would we make that up? By waiting, are we gonna pay more?
More efficient.
And are we gonna become more efficient? And is it gonna pay for itself in 10 years?
Well, as far as return for, return on investment, I can't give you that number. I don't know that.
Understood.
But without question, gas condensing boilers are the way to go, and it's not just that, but because what's there is an old steam system, steam traps, steam valves, they're constantly breaking at this point, because they're old, and it's an antiquated control system, too. So now, everything can be integrated with building management, everything electrically controlled. It's night and day, and it's a matter of time before you have to do it anyway.
A short matter of time.
Yeah, I mean, you're looking at end of life on this stuff. So if you're gonna do it, as opposed to trying to patch it into a system in a few years, if we do it now, everything can integrate, and the entire design can work together.
It's safe to say that we've been investing in repairing it? We keep, we're patching it and repairing it, and, but it's, we're getting to the end?
It's inevitable, yeah. That's stuff, so that, I believe the burn is replaced, and I don't even know when that was. That was.
About 2012 is when we converted that from oil, heat, oil burners to natural gas. So it was about 2011, 2012 when we did that conversion?
But the boilers themselves are original, and efficiency didn't matter back then, because oil was cheap. We cared. Now it's a big deal.
And I will say, one of the failures that we're seeing, when they attempted to go and check the lighting and stuff like that in the auditorium, one of the steam pipes is actually broken over there, and, you know, they were seeing steam coming up through the floor. They weren't able to test or even turn on anything over there, because it was coming up right at that location. So, you know, we could chase that all day long to get to a resolution. And to be honest, we didn't, you know, up until we got those, the bids back in, we, you know, we didn't think that there was enough within the authorization to even consider a heating system, so.
So with the remaining ARPA funds, would that give enough?
Well, that could be a, you know, that, maybe that's a possibility, but, you know, the, the funds came in very, the bids came in very favorably. So right now, there may be enough within the actual budget itself right now for them to be able to complete that heating system. And then you could potentially just use the ARPA money to, you know, lower how much we have to borrow for the project, right? Versus, but it may be that.
Air conditioning.
Right, or you may decide to take the ARPA funds and invest that in looking at air conditioning for the second floor.
It would make, make it, it would make sense that if we did the upgrades, the HVAC like that, and made the building completely climate-controlled, if we needed to resell it, I would think it would be more, more appealable, or more sellable of, if, not that we ever sell anything.
The library does not, I mean, the recreation department does not wanna talk about selling that building. They can't wait to get into that auditorium. But yes, clearly, having it fully HVAC'd is a benefit. And, you know, I will say, the Eastcon, you know, the tenants right now would be very appreciative. Right now, they're running window units or portable units that are venting out to windows. We all know that those portable units are incredibly inefficient, especially in, you know, classroom-sized spaces and stuff like that. And they also lead to, you know, water leaks and things like that, which adds damage to property. So, you know, it, it could make a lot of sense to go in that direction.
One thing I think about, too, is I know with the Broad Street building, that we've got issues getting parts for the boilers, because of the age. I understand it's much older, but I always wonder how much longer it would be before, if we don't do an upgrade now, before we run into a similar issue at Westfield, and then after the fact have to go back in. I know personally, myself, I would love to see if there's enough money left over, since the bids came back low, to be able to do the boiler replacement and stay within the already-approved amount. And I, I'd love to hear numbers as far as what the, what it would be to put AC up in a second story as well. I mean, it's, it doesn't hurt to get numbers, is the way I look at it.
I believe we're supposed to be giving numbers on that.
We are.
Not for, not for second floor AC.
Oh, no. I thought you said first.
But we can, we can pursue that as well.
There are other economies, too. For example, the tunnels are gonna be abated, so insulation, asbestos insulation comes off, and we have to re-insulate the steam piping, whereas if we change to hydronic now, we only re-insulate once. If we do it in five years, now we re-insulate a second time. There are, there are other economies in doing it now, and our goal was to have the money in our, in our budget to do it, and that's what we're trying to do.
Any other comments? All right. Want to thank you for coming, thank you for all the information.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So moving on in the agenda, we have nothing for executive session, so I will entertain a motion to go into recess until 8:00 PM. Motion was made by Mr. Gambatista, I believe it was seconded by Mr. Kertula. Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. We're in recess, and it is 7:44 PM.